Twenty twenty-three, six P M. I'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order. I'd like to ask Pastor J.C. Hopkins from Cornerstone Word of Life Church to come and deliver the invitation. And seeing that he's not present, Mayor, would you mind leading us?
I'll do that, yeah. Stay in, please. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this wonderful day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together at the City Council meeting and share our community and talk about the areas that we continue to want to see as we work hard to make it the best community it can be. Lord, on the special day of nine eleven, we remember all of those who tragically we lost and we ask and we thank all of those who each who rushed in to continue as they did each and every day to do what they needed to do to save people and be with people. Lord, we ask that you be with each and every one of us tonight, whether you're up on this diets or out in the audience, and help us to understand there's a much better picture in this world and we're very appreciative of what we have, who we are, and what we continue to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor. Please join me in the pledge, please. Roll call, please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears? Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Here.
Councilmember Seaford?
Here.
Next, we have approval of the minutes number twenty twenty-three dash zero-nine dash W S dated August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
It's approved.
Any motion by Shaw, second by Spears? Oh, right, and then I'll get the minutes agenda just now. Can you discuss on minutes? Seeing none, ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next, we have minutes number twenty twenty-three dash sixteen dash R G dated for August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
It's approved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Mr. Kibbord, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
We do. H R has requested that we remove item B under the Department reports for human resources. This will be resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two eighty R.
Okay, and with that, the agenda is approved. Next, under presentations and awards, we have a presentation and proclamation by Mayor designating the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third, twenty twenty-three as Constitution Week.
Five chapters, but usually I meet in our conference room, but we're thrilled to have you guys, anybody wants to come on up. And it's a proclamation for Constitution Week. And I'll go ahead and read a little bit of this. It's where September seventeenth of twenty twenty-three marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-sixth anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It's fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document, its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. So now therefore, I, Paul Finley, Mayor of the City of Madison, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, as Constitutional Week in the City of Madison, Alabama. And I know there's five different chapters, so I'll give each one of you one and it is signed and let you go from there. Give you one. And one last one. And I'll let you say a couple of words if you'd like to.
I absolutely would. September seventeenth, two-hundred-and-thirty-six years ago, Constitution of the United States was approved. That is the framework for everything we do here. Every one of these individuals took an oath to preserve and protect that document. We need to remember it. I hope that you all might join us on next Sunday, September seventeenth, at Faith Presbyterian Church. We will have an event called Bells Across America. D A R chapters across the country try to simultaneously ring bells at four P M. Eastern Time to mark the time that, according to tradition, the bells were rung after the Constitution was signed. I have constitutions I'm going to give to each member of the Madison City Council. I'm sure they all have one, they'll probably share this one with someone else. A great document to read, take the time to do it.
Thank you. Thank you. Down there, up there.
It's even behind us, but you'd be up higher and that's it. You should be up higher.
No, we should not.
Thank you.
You're fine, you're fine.
I'm proud of you.
You're fine, you're fine.
We're gonna do.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay.
We're back. Thank you very much. Next, in our agenda is public comments related to agenda items. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please state your name and your district, state the agenda item you are speaking to, and please say general comments until the end of the meeting for that portion of the agenda. I have one comment card that has been turned in from Bernadette Mayer, District Five.
Good evening. As she said, I'm Bernadette Mayer, I'm in District Five, I live off Southwood Drive. Okay, number one, the proposed ordinance that Renee Bartlett's introducing for council members about the Order of Business, I want to say leaves the current public comments and current times in place for before and after. The current city council has toyed enough with these public comments on city council meeting agenda and we need to stop this. I don't even know if this first reading with public comments alone, it's at item F, is continuing with three minutes or five minutes, but irregardless, I think that three minutes before and three minutes after is what you guys have done, changed it too, and I think it needs to just stay there. Okay, number two, the H R job classification thing that was removed, so I won't talk about that right now. Number three, under legal, asking for spending five thousand a month for some lobbying services for one-year period. I understand that this is somebody that's been doing this work in the past, but evidently, you know, we have a new job classification of the lobbyists. We have gone from ten to sixteen to seventeen departments, economic development planning, revenue, mayor, all these areas, city departments, we're focusing on city departments and jobs and things within the city. We don't need to have this additional thing beyond what we've all been having, adding and adding and adding on city departments. Okay, and then my next item is on the meeting agenda items. I found this, in all the meetings I've attended, there's a failure to really discuss in the past anything or very short comments within city meeting, city council meeting agenda items that do not have enough information on agenda attachment. I want to remind you about open meeting laws and the spirits of the law. Desire for transparency on issues and reasoning on voting, aye. City council member transparency. You know, we in the audience don't have the information you guys have and we really appreciate when, for the citizens that are watching this, as well as for us that are here, to have things properly discussed and looked at. I'm really upset at how the city departments have grown to being sixteen departments and lots of layering of all these positions and for things that aren't even in place yet. And yet no transparency on what's going on with budgeting and anyhow, the rest of my comments will be for later. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on an agenda-related item?
Margie Daly, Tarrant's District. Constitutional proclamation. How ironic, the night you take our free speech away again, okay? You silence the public speech once again. We need our full five minutes back at the beginning or the front and back the way we were doing it. We realize you have lost your way on our Constitution and any constituent services. Cities aren't built by rushing to hand out tax dollars to developers, friends, family, M V Ps, and on. It was obvious that quarrels go on behind closed door with Greg Shaw trying to bring this up at the last council and he got the death ray look from the council president Bartlet openly defying the Open Meetings Act continuously. Congratulations to Renee Spouse for taking over as the chess club agent, keeping it all in the family. Two ninety-three, twelve acquisitions of property. We no longer can negotiate with our neighbors and taxpayers. We must pay firms eighteen thousand to cut down the neighbor's property values for developers. Two eighty, what has become of our beautiful small city? All-powerful council, as if we're a city of millions with sixteen departments plus M U, unknown of the number of classifications, how many grade seventeens must we hire? I have requested this by freedom of information and was refused by Mister Kilgore as idle Not my concern of the overreaching, overspending, and overall nepotism, the good old boys and girls active, large and in charge in Madison City. Why aren't residents entitled to know how many employees we have and yet we get no services? Then we have three oh-five, the fiber lines. I think we're now calling twenty-three A, that would be the Hexagon Project, the deal gone sideways instead of fire and safety. We have an employee gym and proposed pickleball courts for the few. Then we also have a Swatech, the lobbyist down in Montgomery. Now, we have a whole, we have hired a whole marketing department with a lobbyist position, yet we still need to keep on Swatech? The redundancies that you guys have created are unnecessary and I think we ought to look into them. Then E F and G, seventy-eight thousand, six thousand, no file, no bill, no invoice, why? C D G, Rogers Group, who are they? There's no name on the Secretary of State for that company. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on an agenda-related item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Finance Committee has reviewed all the regular periodic bills to be paid and found everything to be in order. With that, I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Presentation and reports, beginning with Mayor Finley.
All right, and a couple of quick things. The budget has now gone through the Finance Committee, if I'm not mistaken, and it's to the full council, is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, we got our question today.
Okay, so they all have that. Secondly, Trash Panda's finished their season yesterday. From what I hear from them, attendance as far as the entire season will be right at what it was last year, give or take a couple, and we'll get the full accounting for that. And one thing about that is they continue to be up to date with any payment that they owe us for this year. Third, the James Clemmons Homecoming Parade is this Thursday at five thirty down County Line Road, still something that we do that's really neat from a community standpoint. So again, Thursday, five thirty, please make adjustments for that hour or so as we enjoy that. Fourth, there is, what's that? I've got five thirty, but.
I think we meet at five.
Yeah, we meet at five and I think it's five thirty. And then two other things. One, the, this coming Saturday at Toyota Field is the AUSA Red Star National Team is playing the Patriot Amputee Softball Team, a phenomenal group of men and women that, I think that game's at five thirty at Toyota Field. And then lastly, excited that Niche has again named the zip code of three-five-seven-five-eight, which we're sitting in right now, as the number-one zip code to live in in Alabama. Our three-five-seven-five-six zip code ranked number five, so we have number one and number five. The question that many of you are asking is, well, how many zip codes are there in the state of Alabama? And the answer is eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight zip codes. So to all of those monstrous number of people that are managing this city and that we continue to add people to, thank you for all you're doing to continue to help our city be ranked from that as number one. And with that said, that's all I have.
Thank you. District One.
Yes, ma'am. The mayor forgot to mention that we attended this morning the nine-eleven remembrance event. Appreciate him being there and.
I left it for you. I knew you needed it, Ma.
I dressed for the occasion. Well, you know, I just want to thank.
I called alley-oop, buddy.
Alley-oop, yeah. Chief Bailey and Chief Gandhi for their joint effort in today's just very important event. We can never forget. We have to remember those that perished that day, those that went in to rescue, so many. We lost three thousand that day, but so many lived because so many fought for their lives and just so appreciative. I want to make a note next year to really advertise that on my social media accounts and get better attendance. I think we had probably twenty people honk as they drove by, but we need to let our community know that we have that at our fire station on Hughes Road every nine-eleven at nine A M., which is when the event that will forever change our nation happens, so we will never forget that. On a lighter note, want to mention that the Madison Library is having their mad movie Extravaganza this month, the fourteenth is Robot Monster, but, which, you know, sometimes they take movies I've never heard of, but on September at twenty-eighth is Escape from New York, which is really actually a good movie. So mark your calendar for those fun events. And then tomorrow night, Tuesday, at six thirty, we have our Friends with the Library meeting. So if you're interested in coming and supporting our local library and getting involved, we would love to see you there. And that's all I have.
Thank you. District Two.
Okay, an email that I'm looking at says five o'clock for the parade, so it's either five or five-thirty, y'all. Also, on Thursday at seven P M. on the front lawn at James Clemmons, they will have the Jet dedication. So that's been a long-awaited thing over in Jet territory. And that is all I have.
Thank you. District Three.
He's at five, he's at five-thirty, I'm gonna say five-fifty.
There you go.
Probably it is five and just show up at five or a little bit early, but anyway, nine-eleven, I would, I would like to say something about that as well. There were three thousand people, there were three hundred and forty-some-odd firefighters that ran into those towers knowing they weren't coming out. They didn't have enough air to go up and back down, they knew it, and they did it anyway. And, you know, it was, I watched some of that today, they call out all, if y'all ever watched any of this, they call out every single one of the names. There's an additional three thousand people that have died after that, you know, from things that they inhaled or what have you. And one thing that was said is the firefighters pull them out, the E M Ts, the police officers, the nurses, all those people pull them through. And, you know, we have to take on some of that too as citizens, that's what we do. And let us not forget that and let's not forget the people here, because that's exactly what they would be doing. And I just, that's all I've got.
Thank you. District Four.
No new business.
District Six.
I'd like to talk about the Madison Street Festival. It is coming up on October seventh, which is not that far away anymore. We're very excited. We have such a great number of food vendors, businesses, crafts, everything really involved this year and it's gonna be great. So please mark it on your calendar, it's October seventh, and we are still looking for volunteers, so if you have some time to give that day, please go to our website and volunteer. We'd really love to have you join us. Because they haven't been around, it's just a wonderful citywide family event. Also, I do believe the budget work session is scheduled for September nineteenth at four o'clock, is that still correct?
That's correct.
Right, so I would encourage anyone who is interested in our budget to attend that, to learn more, to talk, to listen as we talk and discuss what the next budget is gonna look like. I think it's important for all citizens to be knowledgeable of what our budget looks like. I'd also like to add my thoughts to the first responders. I am so grateful for those that have sacrificed and have done so much to protect us in this community. I'm grateful to our police and to our firefighters. We are very blessed to have such dedicated individuals here to keep us safe, and I just wish to express my appreciation for that. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. District Seven.
No new business.
Hey, under my line item, I have the proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero three zero six, repealing and replacing the Order of Business for council meetings. We discussed this at our last work session and it was the consensus that this should be presented to the council to go back to the way we originally had it. I heard from different council members throughout the period after we changed the order and split public comments, where public comments on agenda-related items are at the beginning and general public comments are toward the end. After trying this out for a period of time, I got the sense from the work session that the council was ready to go back to the way that it was previously, so that all public comments would be at the beginning of the meeting. I would just like to open that up for any discussion, if anyone has any comments they want to add to that characterization of what we discussed at the work session.
This is a first reading, correct?
This is a first reading. If council wants the order to go back to the way that it was, we could waive first reading this evening, suspend the rules, and vote on the ordinance tonight. And then at the next meeting on September twenty-fifth, we would go back to the way that it was.
Do we need a motion first before we suspend the rules?
Oh, we would need a motion to suspend the rules if that is what this council would like to do.
Are you gonna suspend the rules?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion on going ahead and voting this evening? The first vote will be on suspending the rules.
Okay, you want to do that and then get into the discussion of why we think it's important to change or?
Yes, first, the first discussion is simply on suspending the rules and doing the vote this evening. We have a motion and second, any discussion on suspending the rules? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. On the motion to suspend, it needs to be unanimous vote in order for us to move forward. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council, Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the vote is unanimous. Now we move to the motion that's on the floor, which is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash three zero six.
It's approved. Second.
Okay, motion and a second, open for discussion.
What are the details here? I mean, I know, moving back to what we had, just to refresh everybody's mind.
So the ordinance, the way that it existed before it was changed was three minutes of public comments at the beginning of the meeting, not splitting public comments, it could be on any topic or an agenda-related item at the beginning.
And they would still have the opportunity to speak during the public hearings as well?
Of course, yes. That did not change in terms of public hearings and you still get five minutes for public
I continue to believe that I think the voice of the people does come first. I do want to see the public comments moved back to the beginning so that they can speak, but I also would like us to have a separate section, like it's turned out, where people can talk on public comments, but also address specifically anything that's in the agenda. So they could have two times to speak so they still get their voice out, but I just do like it at the beginning when everyone is here and listening to what the people have to say because it's the people's voice first.
Any other comments?
How does that, I'm just curious, I mean, how does that change it? If you, if you still have, if you have public comments at the beginning, but then you still have something at the end?
No, not at the end. It would all be at the beginning, but it'd be divided into two sections. You'd have public comments, anything they want to talk about concerning city things, but if there are very specific items which they do appear to like to talk about, because their voices should be heard on things in the agenda, they should have that time also. Because I thought it was very beneficial that we heard both of, you know, both public comments and give them time to talk. But I would just like to see it at the beginning when everyone is here and listening, as opposed to the end when a lot of people have passed, have gone on and are no longer listening to public comments at the end.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, ready for a vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the vote is unanimous and it passes and we'll go back to the way that we were doing it before, we amended, and we will have public comments at the beginning on any and all items for three minutes. Okay, we have one board committee appointment. Who has zoning board?
That would be me.
Okay.
And it's Michael Scott Harbor, Michael Scott Harbor, place two, and it's with a zoning board of adjustments and appeals, and he's moving from supernumerary number one position, and we'll have some light for that later.
Okay, we have one nomination, any other nominations? Seeing none, Michael Scott Harbor is appointed to place two by acclamation. Next, we have one public hearing on resolution number twenty twenty-three two seventy-nine dash R.
Good evening. The Revenue Department has one public hearing tonight, and this is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two seven nine R, and this is a request from the Leafy Gar Emporium, L S T, Doing Business, the Leafy Gar Emporium. The visit had requested a lounge retail leisure class-one license for their location at twelve one-ten County Line Road, Suite B. The reason that they are applying at this time is because this is a new business in Madison and everything is in order for this item to be considered.
Thank you. And is the property owner here or anyone who?
They are here.
Do they want to speak or?
No, if you guys have any questions, they are here to us.
Okay, we're gonna open public hearing on this item. Please state your name.
Margie Daly, Tarrant's District. Okay, so it's been months upon months, we've been asking for a policy with school zones. We need to, with these liquor licenses, obey the thousand-seat school zones, but you guys eliminated that policy. So now, we're not making any policy, we're just humming along, giving anybody everywhere a liquor license. I've also requested that we get a map of where the new liquor licenses are going because, you know, we're just handing these out like candy and we really need both new policy, which we, the public, have requested from you, and you refuse to even look at it. This is much like, the original policy for public speaking was five minutes in the beginning, not three minutes, so you have taken our free speech tonight ironically on the day they gave this proclamation to the Constitution. Our own representatives, that we vote. Our, our own representatives that we voted on have taken away our free speech. All we want is it back, if you don't wanna give us the time at the end, then give us the five minutes. I mean, cutting it down to three minutes, you are taking free speech.
And this is a public hearing on a retail liquor license?
So I'd like to know why you have never put out a map, or have not worked on any policy in three years, any CIP or policy, uh, and this, our school zones need to be delineated. I mean, we have requested this numerous of times, and yet still, we have no maps of the liquor license, we're just handing them out at every public meeting, and I ask and ask, and you just look at me and like, who are you? But, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public hearings?
Bernadette Mayer, District Five. Um, I also reiterate the same things, zoning on liquor license relevant to school zones, and also general planning, construction zones, safety's supposed to be one of our issues. Um, a gun, gun store with, within, very close to a city school and several small schools and the, the Madison Public Library, there's no zoning review as our city is growing. The, uh, the zoning on liquor licenses like this one, the council's not having any kind of a show of where these liquor licenses are, where they are relevant to the schools, any kind of a policy or whatever, uh, it, you know, it, it just, it tends, we're ending up having ISO and be below community standards of new construction, some of these licenses, um, and, uh, you know, mo- you know, this town is, you know, this town is, the city is growing, but it's not growing beyond this. You guys have hired a whole bunch, expanded your departments and everything else, and yet you can't work on zoning. Um, we've, I requested that the planning department have maybe some new faces in there, and listen to what the public is saying, but instead, nothing is changing, and this stuff is just getting pushed through. Um, it's interesting that safety's such a big issue, but not relevant to school zones, and, you know, and as far as city planning, this zoning stuff really, really is very disheartening. And I really want to say, you know, we elect you guys, and, you know, we're looking for a good two thousand twenty-four, we're gonna have a new election in two thousand twenty-five, but honestly, you guys are railroading us terribly.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the public hearing on the retail liquor license?
He said that the owners are, they are here. Can I ask him a couple of questions, if that's all right?
We're gonna wait and close public hearings at this time, and let you proceed with your questions.
Yes, sir, I was gonna be for sure. Y'all gonna serve, like, young, young children, like, whiskey drinks or alcohol drinks? No, sir, no, sir. They pull up on like a five cigarette, y'all are good, y'all ain't gonna serve them. You gonna let them smoke a cigar, or let them cut ends off of them?
No, sir.
No, sir. All right, well, we'll make sure we're keeping everybody safe.
Yes, sir. This is a high-end, premium cigar lounge, if you're familiar with sip downs, it's gonna be something similar to that.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Good deal. I'll, you know, we're gonna be safe. We'll check all the boxes, we had to ask the question.
By the way, we have security clearances, I'm a veteran, so no, we would not risk any of that.
Well, we really do appreciate y'all.
Yeah, thank you for your investment in Madison.
Can I ask one, do you first, and I, full-heartedly, thank you for your investment. One thing, 'cause you guys are right next to, uh, Goodland.
The Menor House, and then of course, Corkin Crush.
So I guess the one question I would have is, is a cigar bar that could infringe on, you know, ventilation and that kinda thing, is there special things that have been done there too?
Yes, uh, there's provisions in our lease as well, we've invested a significant amount in ventilation, uh, we also have outdoor areas.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, and the public hearing is closed, and seeing that there are no other, uh, questions from council?
I guess I would add, I mean, I just did a quick Google, I think we're like, uh, according to Google Maps, we're six tenths of a mile from the nearest public school, so I think we're in a safe distance there. And given the fact they're not gonna serve, you know, middle school kids, or, I think that's probably all right.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second?
So do we already have?
Do we already have a motion?
No.
I don't know that we have a motion and a second, I think we started. Okay.
You have a second.
Okay. Motion by Seaford, second by Roblesky. Any discussion? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Department reports, beginning with engineering.
All right, first I have resolution number twenty twenty-three one eight one R. This is authorizing acquisition of property and easements for the construction of the Hardeman Road, Madison Branch Boulevard Roundabout, in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars to be paid from the engineering budget.
Move to approve, second. Okay, motion and second, any discussion? Do you have a map, that, isn't there a map attached to the agenda? Do you have that to show the people?
Uh, I don't know if they have it available, no. The, the.
A map to show exactly where that roundabout, what properties involved?
Are you asking about which pe- which of the pieces of property in this vicinity it is, or just a general map of the area?
Well, just so the people have a greater understanding of what it is we're talking about.
Okay, there's nothing prepared, uh, there's no slide prepared for that, but this is the southwest corner of the proposed intersection.
And I would just add that there is, in the packet, a picture of the overview that shows precisely where the property was, so even though it's not a slide right now, it was prepared in part of the packet as well.
And we've seen it before, where the roundabout is going, right?
Right, pre- previously brought to you and acquired the property on the north side.
Right.
So this, this went through a condemnation process and a negotiation, and they finally agreed, and, and this is just, uh, the authorization of that acquisition.
Thank you for clarification. Okay, any other questions? All right, ready for a vote? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
And the motion passes, next.
Okay, next is resolution number twenty twenty-three two ninety-three R. This is authorizing a professional services agreement with Nivens and Associates, uh, appraisals for, appraisal of twelve property acquisitions, uh, required for project number twenty-two zero three-nine. This is the Seagres Road and Masill Drive intersections, uh, not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars to be paid from the engineering department budget. This is eighteen thousand dollars for the appraisal, not eighteen thousand dollars for the acquisition of the property. This is how we find out how much the property is.
Move to approve, second. Motion second, any discussion or questions?
Glad you could agree to that, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I was glad you clarified that. Hi, so just a question on this, and I, I should ask a question on the other. Obviously, I mean, you anticipated this as part of the budget, uh, to execute those projects, is this under, over, in line with the anticipated amount?
Uh, thi- this is in line with, thi- this is more or less in line with what we expected for the, uh, the contract to do the appraisal, yes. We, we have some money in the budget, I don't have the number off the top of my head, what we, you know, what we expect to spend on acquiring these, uh, but this is, this is in line with what we've set aside, this is actually a little bit lower, we tend to be pretty conservative on this.
Okay, thank you. And one thing I'll add is we had to, uh, continue to have, uh, good meetings with the schools, you know, this is an area that's, that directly impacts the new elementary school, continue to work well with them, as far as understanding how we support making sure it's safe at those intersections, and that's one of the things they're looking at too. All right, cool, thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I was hoping that you have a map for this one, because there wasn't one in the pocket.
There wasn't one in the pocket.
Just so we understand where you're appraising and what, for what purposes?
This is, the appraisal is to widen Masill Road, where it, where it connects from Seagres, back towards, well, the previous, where they're gonna run that road all the way through, developers working on the road and the roundabout, and then the school's gonna work on the road directly in front of the school, and then this is where Masill's gonna tie into that, to make it a through pass from Hardeman all the way past those residential developments, past the school, on to Masill, and then, uh, on out to Seagres. So this is to acquire easements and right-of-way, uh, along those properties on the north side of Masill, the one big tract on the south side of Masill, plus a little bit on the Seagres side too, where the intersection is.
Okay, so this is evidence clear, it's connecting where the school is, over towards Seagres?
Well, the proposed school will be correct, yes.
Right, okay, and how much land do you think we're going to need in that area?
Um, they aren't completely finished with the, with the plans, but probably twenty, twenty-five feet maybe, uh, on some of, I mean, it's different on different ones, so it's, you know, it depends on which side you're looking at, north side, south side, and how they align the road. They're still working on finalizing the plans, but it's, it's, uh, twenty feet or less in general.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, I drove down through there, and I was just wondering which, how like, what was the plan, and I take it and stuff?
Yes, ma'am, and there's some complications too with Limestone County, of some of those roads weren't necessarily right-of-away, they were prescriptive easement, and so we're having to kinda go through that process too. So it's hard for me to give you an exact width, because there's not a, there's not, there's not right-of-way for some of those, right, they're trying to figure out how much of it we can decide is prescriptive easement, then we can figure out how much on top of that we need to acquire in addition to the prescriptive easement, if that makes sense.
So the appraisal is to get the, the value of that right-of-way property? Just clarifying?
Right.
Right, okay, thank you.
The road property and the right-of-way property, correct?
No, well, the right-of-way property is the road property, so we're gonna get, they're gonna, first they have to determine how much is it gonna be prescribed for right-of-way, how much we don't have to pay for, because it's been used as a road for seventy, eighty years, and to figure how much on top of that we have to add. Uh, is it ten feet, is it twenty-five feet? It just, it just depends on what they determine as prescriptive easement. Sometimes they just go the width of the road, sometimes they add the ditch, sometimes they add where the utilities are, it just depends.
It is inclusive.
Right.
Okay.
And again, this is just the contract to get the appraisal.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, and finally, this, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three two ninety-eight R. This is authorizing an amendment to our agreement with OHM advisors on project number twenty, uh, twenty-three zero one-one, Volcheng Gooch, uh, intersection improvements, in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars, uh, to be paid from engineering department budget. This is additional survey needed for that area, um, for the proposed roundabout improvement.
Move to approve, second. Okay, motion, Mr. Shaw, second by Powell, any discussion or questions?
How's that coming? How's that project? I know you probably told us a while back, but I've slept since then.
We're at about sixty percent on design for that, and so they're gonna go back and a little bit more. We've, we've pretty much determined an alignment for how it's gonna be, how much of an offset there's gonna be, we talked with the mayor's office about that a few weeks ago, we talked with some of the businesses and residents over there, got with those guys, what their expectations are gonna be. Uh, this is specifically for hospital access over there, and how we're gonna get, how we're gonna maintain that emergency access through that intersection, particularly for emergency vehicles approaching from the east, so that's what, that's what this is about.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And the landowner's really positive there, as far as working with us too, off like they're at the corner, yep.
Okay, ready for a vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Michael.
All right, thank you.
HR.
Good evening, I have one item for your consideration tonight, it's resolution twenty twenty-three two sixty-eight R. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement for use of the Insanity Complex property for a city driver safety training event that's coming up at the end of October. Periodically, the city's insurance company sponsors what's called Skid Car Training to train our safety-sensitive employees in how to drive in hazardous weather conditions, and if you've never seen a Skid Car, it's a car like inside an apparatus that simulates those driving conditions. Typically, that's been held in the city's stadium parking lot, but that's much busier now that the school is open, and now that they're having, um, post office driver training there too. So we needed a new location for it, and Insanity was glad to host us if we would hold them harmless from damage that may occur, um, during the course of the training, and we have a safe record with the training, so we don't anticipate there will be any problems, but the company did want this agreement from us, and I'll be glad to take any other questions that you have.
Move to approve, second. Okay, motion and second, any questions?
Do we get to drive?
We do, you can, the side up, they're open. Yeah.
Any other?
People that need it.
Give me a head start out of the parking lot, and everybody will be okay.
I think this should be required for all fifteen and sixteen-year-old drivers, period.
And seventeen-year-olds. Older too.
Any other questions? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
IT.
Get y'all to J-turn, man.
Hello, I have two items for IT. The first one is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three oh one dash R. This is authorizing supplemental insurance, and is to be paid from general operating budget.
Move to approve, second. Motion second, any discussion? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the second item is resolution number twenty twenty-three dash three oh five dash R. This is authorizing an agreement with Comcast for installation of fiber at the twenty-three A building, part building, business part building, sorry.
Move to approve, second. Motion and second by Spears. Um, any discussion? Or questions? Seeing none, ready for a vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal.
Good evening, uh, Legal has two matters for your consideration. First would be Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Two Ninety-seven Dash R. This would, uh, be for authorizing an agreement with Swatag Vaughn and Bryant LLC for government relations and lobbying services, uh, in the amount of five thousand per month for a one-year period. Uh, these are basically payments that are paid in retainer, um, but, uh, this would be basically renewing a contract that we already have.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any questions? I do have a question, so what exactly are they providing for the city?
Well, basically, the contract provides that if we need them, that they can provide any sort of, uh, lobbying services, uh, or contact or outreach to the state, et cetera. Um, so what we've done to this point is basically we're paying a retainer, and, uh, basically the retainer's built up so that when we do need to call on them, that we would be able to, uh, pay for their services. Uh, lobbying is not cheap.
And the specific answer to your question is, they are the ones that we've used for the last two years to help us secure five hundred thousand dollars each year from the state that directly will support the community center. We're with them, that's one of the things that they do. They also are the direct liaisons into many of the different, um, ALIA, ADECA, all the different state departments. Um, and one of the reasons in hiring Tracy Gillespie from an internal side is that we have better communication and utilize them even more throughout the state agencies. They are in Montgomery, they are the ones that are down there. The five hundred thousand dollars at one point went out of committee from the Senate side to three hundred thousand dollars because of working with them, they were able to get it back in to make sure that we got that. So they're a liaison for us at the state level that helps us with the different things that we need, and they're on a retainer basis so we can use them as much or as little as we need to.
You're saying, paying them this much every month, we have seen a return that's greater than the value of retainment?
I am. I'm saying out of about two years, about spending about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, they've helped us secure at least a million dollars' worth of things. They also help us work and understand some of the grant monies that are available. They helped us, um, they, when they were involved, um, when we first came out with the COVID money, we were one of the first cities because of their knowledge of how to utilize and get to that state money, that helped us secure the money, um, internally that paid, and we were able to, the PPP when it was for using police and fire. So absolutely, they are a, a, an essential piece of what we do to utilize other people's money to pay for some of the things. Right now, one of the things they're looking at, and they've helped us look at, is understanding what some of the other cities that have minor league baseball have had to do to meet the unfunded mandates that the, um, that the city, uh, that we, that we're looking at. So they're a valuable part of the team and they have the expertise to help us.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, next.
Uh, next we have Proposed Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Three Dash Three Zero Three. This would authorize a new offense for a hands-free driving to our city code. The state has a, uh, a similar, um, violation that they have, but it's a little different from what we, what was suggested by P D and that we put together for your consideration. Right now, we have a state code that says that, uh, you basically just get a warning until January, and the only way that you could be ticketed for using your handheld device would be if, if it was secondary to some other reason for pulling you over. So basically, they have to pull you over for something else and find that you have been using your phone, you know, you're looking at it or whatever. Our is a little different in that as soon as it is advertised, then we become effective. So that's different from the state. And second, this would be a primary offense, so basically, our officers could stop somebody if the only reason for the stop was in fact using a handheld device, uh, taking your attention away from the road. Uh, basically, what we would have here is a fine of twenty-five dollars for first offense, fifty for second, and seventy-five dollars for the third. And this would just be the first reading for this.
And is this similar to what Huntsville has just?
It is, it is, it is nearly identical to the, uh, ordinance that they've already passed.
Okay, just for free, so, thank you.
Thank you.
How they gonna defend that?
Second.
How do you defend that in court? Somebody says, you on your phone? No, I wasn't.
It, it, it really, you know, like a lot of things that, that our officers have to enforce or testify to, it's, it's their testimony versus that of the person in court. Uh, we also have body camera, we have some, it, it, it can be difficult, but, uh, it's just an added incentive to try to, you know, take distracted drivers off the road.
Chief Andy, do you have anything to add?
I'll just say that it's instant driving is number one cause of fraud. Other than what they're supposed to do, that's canceled.
Okay, thank you.
They'll still work on their dash if they're typing a number on their dash and not on their phone.
Asking for a friend?
I'm just trying to figure out, like, how do you even defend?
No, no, I'd be happy to, uh, basically, if you're talking, if you're talking, uh, on the phone, you're basically required to use either an ear, earpiece, or maybe use your, um, your console for the phone, but it, you cannot use it for the phone while you have it in your hand, basically. You can't use, look at it, uh, you know, for directions, I think that probably violates it, uh, but everything else as far as handling it in your hand, looking at it, uh, pretty much that would be a violation.
Can you use a screen on your vehicle?
Uh, I think as long as it's not in your hand, uh, you know, if you have like one of those mounts, I think it just gets harder, like, like you said, I mean, it's a little harder to enforce at that point as far as, were they actually distracted by looking at what's mounted on the, um, it's called hands-free, but the way that it's actually drafted, I think that you could prosecute one under the right circumstances if it was mounted.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here for, uh, Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-Three Two Eighty-seven R, and it's authorizing a memorandum of agreement with ALIA in the Alabama Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, what we call HIDA. Uh, that particular group allows us to de-conflict, uh, ongoing drug investigations, criminal investigations, um, and our North Alabama Drug Task Force is part of it. And what this agreement does, it allows us to receive reimbursements from the HIDA group in the amount of twenty thousand, fifty dollars for, uh, overtime costs for our Drug Task Force detective.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion second, any questions? Seeing none, ready for vote. Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Recreation.
Every department head for tonight.
Good evening, I have Resolution Twenty Twenty-Three Two Ninety-six Dash R, authorizing an agreement with the City of Huntsville for scheduling and dispatch services for our Marsh program. Um, we do this every year with the City of Huntsville. Um, next year might be a little more, I, they've informed us that they're changing their, uh, computer software, uh, updated, so, um, but.
It gonna be hands-free?
It is. Had to ask.
No, that's your proof.
I have a motion by Powell, do I have a second?
You can even do it.
Second, taken by Roblesky, now, questions?
You can even do it while you're driving, great, hands-free.
Any other questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Corey.
And we're at the portion of the agenda for additional public comments on a new topic. We have one comment card turned in by Bernadette Mayer from District Five.
I'm gonna use a few precious comments time to say that I feel that Mr. Shaw, some of your comments have been disrespectful, and some of them, you aren't talking into the mic, and so when I say talking to the mic, I'm being contacted to say quiet down, and it's like, you gotta talk into the mic. I mean, and some of this joking up here, you know, it might be fun and games to you, but I take these meetings very seriously, okay?
As well as I, for the past seventy years.
Okay.
As well as I.
And I do wanna comment that I didn't enjoy that Mr. Seaford at least looked at, at the distance from the school on, on, on that zoning issue, okay? So, um, I'm very unhappy about our cut, cutting time from, uh, we originally were at five minutes before the meeting, then it changed to three minutes before the meeting, and then it was three minutes before and three minutes after, and that was twinging in part around when we had a city election. Now we're back to just three minutes at the front of the meeting. Honestly, you, you know, we, we've just cut our time from five minutes to three minutes to three, three minute, three minute split to now just, and I, I'm very, very unhappy about that. You really, you need to be listening to our, your constituents. All right, so I, I'm down to the time that I can't really talk about some of the other things I prepared for, um, but I'm, I'm just very upset about how some of this meeting has gone, and I'm, I'm really appalled that the mayor seems to know more about a legal resolution than our, our attorney does, and, and the use of the funds. And guess what? Yes, we had added a lobbying position, and so we're spending on this legal stuff plus the lobbying position within-house. So, you know, the, the cost keeps spiraling up, and I'm really, yes, the money went to PPP, but some of that money went to small businesses that who knows who decided all of that. So the, uh, my first comment that I prepared was the care and concern, along with city regulations, to handle issues of LLCs in and out of Madison County that directly or indirectly financially benefit department heads, city council members, mayor, or relatives from city council decisions and funds. Also care and nepotism practices within city departments tying into these leadership positions. Madison has outgrown these past acceptable practices that circumvent the spirit of the law. Now we have a sixty million dollar budget, don't know fiscal year, we're gonna have seventy million more, desire for more above ethics and best use of revenues to benefit the city. All right, the city has grown from ten departments to seventeen departments, city is involved with Madison Utilities, city has grown to currently having close involvement with appointed, appointed Madison School Board members. The intention was always to move to elected board members, um, and we went from six schools, fifty-six hundred students, to twelve schools, and going to a thirteenth school with thirteen thousand students, and I think that the city council needs to allow, um, us to have an elected, um, school board representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Anyone else who would like to address the public?
Margie Daly, Karen's district. Open public meetings. It's obvious that all decisions are already discussed prior to all council meetings. It's recognizable on most videos and at every meeting. It's so disheartening when Renee chooses who can go over the limit on public speaking, and now we've been usurped from five minutes to three minutes.
That true.
Excuse me?
Your turn, it's your turn.
Yield my time. Hiding public information by refusing all FOIA requests outright malingering and ignoring, ignoring constitutional rights. The House of Cards will fall. Okay, the streetlights. October twenty-two, we phased in these new LED streetlights. I live in an older neighborhood, we have one streetlight for four to six houses that have a hundred and fifty frontage, nine hundred feet in between these LED streetlights. We have black holes all over the neighborhood. How many motor vehicle accidents have we had? I know of two fatalities. The other night, somebody went off by Chris Cove into the lake and knocked the electric out in half the city. Everything over on that side, all the way to seventy-two, got knocked out. Now, you cannot see on these roads where the black holes are. I've said this over and over for a year now, nothing has been done to change it. Baseball stadium. There's forty to fifty owners according to the internet. Somebody must be making money, uh, because somebody just bought in from Arkansas, which I bought the paper and they violated the law, so I did give that to the clerk at the last council. Um, it's a blatant disregard for safety needs in our city by putting baseball over everything else for a few elite connected people hobbies. That's what we're doing, over the citizens. Unfortunately, tonight you have usurped public comment. Um, some of the sidewalks, we requested sidewalks, Teddy Powell ran on making this a walking city. Some of our sidewalks are not ADA compliant. We've been requesting these safety issues in our city, and we get overridden for the elite hobby. We're gonna spend a million dollars for pickleball and six million dollars to expand the stadium. Yet we don't have ADA compliant sidewalks. What is wrong? And the lights on the streets, they're not lit. I mean, we are having more MVAs and fatalities in our city, and now we just knocked out half the city unelectric because the street lighting is unsafe. You had to buy the poles for, um, to take that loan for a hundred million dollars, the bonds you took. Of course, I get kicked out.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name.
My name is Angela Gary. I live in District Five. I don't even know where I'm up. This is not the Madison I grew up in. I had notes written down. That there are meetings. And all I hear is, "Gee, gee, gee." That is pathetic, we're all grown, and it is beyond ridiculous. When is it ever, ever, ever okay to be rude to someone that is sitting with you and supposed to be working with you as a council, just to be rude to them? I mean, you know, your mother should slap your face, if she's still alive. Uh, by the way, my mother's been gone for twenty-seven months, but nobody cares about that. Um, if things are to be done right, and everything is how it's supposed to be, wouldn't you be a cohesive unit working together? I mean, you ran, some of you ran twice, some of you ran three times, and you've been elected. We've got two more years and two more months, and I know some of you are doing the hallelujah chorus and backflips, and I know some of you are thinking, what am I gonna do? How am I gonna pull this one off? Whatever. Whatever you wanna do is fine with me. But there is a, a saying, and I've read it, and I've worked really hard in not coming down here and not saying things that don't mean anything, and I know things don't mean to some, anything that I say doesn't mean anything to some people. I know that, but I don't care, just a lot of things you say don't mean anything to me. But, when, there's a saying that when you're shown disrespect, you need to leave the table. I would agree with that, we know and know, and nobody respects you and you need to leave the table. I haven't been shown disrespect in the city of Madison, and unless I can gather up some fit worth people and Mary Margaret Lanier and Walton Larry Anderson, I'll live here longer than all of y'all and some of us who put together. So, yeah, I should leave the table, but you know what? I own part of the table. I own it. I'm not coming every time, but I'm not going away. I will never go to a closed-door meeting again because of the way I was treated. We don't need to go there. I'm working on forgiveness and thankfulness, and I'm thankful that in two years, we'll get a chance to re-elect whoever needs to be, and my time is up, and thank you so much. And Karen, I'm very sorry, that cloth ending cannot be kind to you ever.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward.
Your purse is up here, in your phone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close public comments. Are there any miscellaneous announcements?
I'd like to, I'd like to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so. Excuse me, Margie. I've never been accused of being quiet, but I'll use the mic. Um, so, you know, coming to these council meetings, um, Ms. Gary, I've, I've been blessed enough, I guess this is my second term, right? So, um, come to these for quite a while, and, um, you know, it's an amazing thing that we can come here and we can have conversations, you can voice what your issues are, we can listen to it, um, but I'm getting to the point where the personal attacks, the disrespect, uh, is just, it's just not how we do things, all right? I was born in the South, at the end of the day, bless your heart, don't mean that, but it's a lot kinder than accusing somebody of something, okay? Let's be civil, let's have discussions. I will also say, freedom of speech is a whole lot different than, do you have three minutes at the beginning, do you have three minutes at the end, do you have five minutes? I will tell every one of you and anybody listening, my cell phone number is out there on the internet, my email address is out there on the internet, you can call me, you can email me, I will meet you for coffee, I will do whatever, or, you know, for lunch, whatever, and I'll listen to you. I have a full-time job on top of this, and I will make time out to listen to you, whatever your issues are. I will guarantee, Ms. Gary, and so I lo, I love you, I listen to you, let me have just a few minutes, okay? Thank you. At the end of the day, let's please be civil, let's please, if you have questions or comments, everybody up here has a way for you to comment and get to us. Freedom of speech doesn't mean that you get up here and you can speak for ten dagum minutes on whatever you wanna talk about. We have business to conduct, we have an agenda and things to get through, okay? And that's what we're here to do. We're not here to gossip, we're not here to accuse members this, this, or that. Now, at the end of the day, it's a free country, you can do whatever the heck you want, there
Public comments have never been five minutes. They've always been three minutes, and it's always been five minutes for a public hearing in my, for the last seven years. Now, it may have been...
That's partially true.
Partially.
You used to be able to sign up for five minutes if you were head of the agenda by, like, a Wednesday or Thursday, and then we changed it all to, to three minutes. So there was a time at one point where that was done, um, and I'll say two things while we're at it. Renee, there's nobody, of all the presidents I've sat next to that has held people accountable to the three minutes, give or take one or two seconds, better than you. Nobody. So that's wrong. Secondly, Bernadette, I'd love to hear you talk, but you've asked over a hundred questions at the last ten meetings, and you don't want an answer, I don't think. I think you just asked the questions. If you want an answer, I welcome you to sit down, come and ask whatever you want, and we can actually give you information instead of just asking a question. Okay?
Hi, Benan, can you motion adjourned?
No, move.
We are adjourned.
We're on the Hexagon Campus, a great partner with the city of Madison, formerly In图Graft, kind of where Madison grew up, but this campus currently has eleven hundred employees, and they have worked with the city of Madison on something that we're so excited to be able to share with you today. As our community continues to grow, we're investing in the critical infrastructure